This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, then we will move forward with the agenda as is. And open, so the next is open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So you can either turn your video on or unmute. It looks like Teresa Davis.
Thank you. I just have a, you know, a minute or so here. So I'm Teresa Davis from Davis Studio 960 in Shelburne Road. And at the March 23rd Planning Commission, we described our plan to expand childcare and educational program at Davis Studio by converting converting 1,200 square foot building, which was originally Architect's Studio and is currently two one-bedroom apartments. And we explained how the impact of the newly implemented LDR Section 18 would levy about a $30,000 fee on this project, which would be prohibitive for us. And we explained that we didn't think it was the intention of the commission to support affordable housing at the expense of childcare, which is also in the right now, and asked the planning commission if they would, you would consider adding childcare as an exception to the LDR Section 1803, and told that the commission would support this, which we greatly appreciate. So currently, three months later, we're now in a position that we can apply for and potentially, most likely receive significant grant from Let's Grow Kids that would help support this project. But they need assurance that the permit will be issued. And it seems like changing the LDR as intended will take some time. So I'm here to ask whether the planning commission would endorse the idea of asking the city council to issue this permit outside of the normal processes in order that we could qualify to receive the grant funding. So we're just basically asking if we approach the city council about this, will the planning commission will let the city council know you're aware of the issue and do intend to revise the LDR to allow this exception in a timeframe that we could qualify for the grant.
Teresa, how significant is the grant to your project?
It is about, they, I just have been working with someone to help usher us through this. And it is a, they anticipate we could get awarded $30,000, which would essentially help furnish everything and go a really long way. So they're, they're very enthusiastically supportive of us, but they need, they don't want to fund anything that could get hung up in permitting.
Paul, I'm sorry, is this the, is this the kind of request that the city council can take without planning commission involvement? Like, can, can they, do they have the ability to go to the city council directly to ask for like a waiver in this case, whether we change the plan or not?
Right. So Jessica and I had a chat about this yesterday, and she asked me to look into it with the city attorney. The issue here is that if there's going to be the removal of a housing unit, the LDRs require a payment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or the construction of a new dwelling in it on the property. The council does not independently have the authority to waive that fee because it's baked into the regulation. But Jessica did ask me, excuse me, to follow up, Bernie, to see if there's any agreements that could be worked out that might be sort of pending action if Teresa and me were willing to, you know, there would have to be some pending action on it. And, you know, the council and the planning commission can't assume that a legis, that legislation is going to change until it does. That's the whole purpose. But could there be some kind of a, of a, essentially, you know, a mini development agreement that if regulations change, then X, Y, Z? So I have not had a chance to follow up since yesterday on that, but she did ask me to look into it for you.
And when we last spoke, we all agreed that the intention of adding childcare is as significant, but we didn't have further discussion about it, right?
Right. So among the things that are on your list of work items that you can decide to include or not include in your next round that I put in your packet on Friday is, are a few things that are unrelated to PUD specifically, but that if you wanted to move forward, you could choose to do that. So in the next month or so, you'll have that sort of go no-go decision point on a few changes, including this one, if you'd like to proceed with it, to go with the next round amendments.
You know, I think the point, the bigger point is the timeline for, for the Davises. Cause we, you know, there's so much work that still needs to happen before we're ready to propose changes to the city council, that it likely would be a few months before, like, any change could be enacted. One of my ideas was that, you know, maybe we could ask the city council, it could be like postpone payment of the fees, you know, in pending our, our final kind of agreement. Cause we can't right now say whether or not we're going to do it, just because there's a process and public hearings and such things that kind of go into it.
And just so I understand, Teresa, your, your being able to tap into these grant funds does not have anything to do with the, the fee that the regs currently ask for, because there's nothing that's preventing you from doing. You're simply looking at the math of it. And really, you're talking about a $60,000 difference because you'd save 30 in the payment and receive 30 in the grant. So what the grant needs to see is a plan. The grant people don't care if there will or will not be a fee relating.
Correct.
Okay. So then, I'm sorry, what are we, so what?
What the grant people care about, they, they essentially want assurance that we will not get hung up in permitting. They don't want to award a grant that then is not, does not have a clear path for permitting. That's their, and they don't need the permit in hand, but they need verbal assurance that we are, have a clear path for permitting.
Yes. So Roseanne brings up a good point in the chat. So this is actually not warranted for discussion, but I, you know, I think Teresa just wanted some feedback on kind of the scheduling and if there was a way to go to the city council. So I think, you know, I've asked Paul for some information from the city attorney to see if there's kind of a way for the city council to be involved kind of directly. You know, knowing that even if we did make a decision, it would have to be at our next meeting because it would have to be warned to, to make a change, it would still take, you know, two months, probably at the least, the whole process itself. So, you know, it's not something we can make a decision on tonight. And even if we wanted to at our next meeting, it would still be a pretty significant amount of time. So.
If, would it be adequate if the planning commission signals its intention to make the change that is necessary, which would give the granters confidence? And is it something we could do, signal that, yes, we intend to make the change to accommodate this? That's a question.
It doesn't sound like there's anything in our regs that have to change, except the waiver of the fee. But I don't think the grant people need to be concerned that our regs need to change, because they don't. The only question is about the part of the reg pertaining to a fee, which is not something the grant people need to be concerned about. So, so it really sounds more like it's the, the develop, development crew here that needs to decide if they're comfortable taking the risk. And because the planning commission already agreed in full to the, the concept, though we have not talked through it, it seems like there would, there should be confidence that it would go that way. But I guess worst case, you've got a grant, and then you have to give it all to the housing trust. But, but the question is, is that, is that sufficient? And that may give you the competence to just, to just go.
Teresa, let's have a follow-up. In the next couple of days here, we can have a chat on some of these ideas and what you potentially need for the grants. Is that okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you for your time, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment not related to the agenda? Okay. Next thing is announcements and staff report. Does anyone have any announcements? Monica and then Ted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Duncan isn't here today, but I did want to share that I happened to just be in Saratoga, New York over the weekend for a soccer tournament. I happened to be at an exit off of 87 where there were a number of roundabouts connected off of this. And there was also a very nice walkway and bike path next to the road where all of these roundabouts were. But interestingly, the hotel has made the decision to advise all guests to not run on that path so that they could avoid having to run by the rotaries. So I just thought of that in regard to the work Duncan's doing with the Swift Spear. And I wanted to share that.
Great. Ted?
Yeah, Helen and I, a couple of weeks ago, had the opportunity to go out west, not as far as where Jessica went. But this was at Lake Powell. And the reason I bring this up was that it was really highlighted, you know, the global warming. We were camped and we were basically where 80, 80 feet of water usually would be. And you look up on the rocks and it's pretty disheartening to see the water line of where, where water was. So, you know, coming back, it just, again, I think it's very important that as we digest.
Did you just mute in?
We lost you there.
Sorry. And coming back, it highlights that we really need to address the the global warming issues vis-à-vis the LDRs that we have. And, you know, discuss, are there any implications that might harm or benefit? It's really, really quite something. And the other issue is, is that I do think global warming is a real issue for people with income issues. A lot of expense to keep your house cool. And they don't have the luxury, many people don't have the luxury of going to the lake or they happen to have, not have a pool and so on. So it really is, is a dramatic issue that I hope we include in all of our discussion. So. One other thing, totally different. It pointed out to me that there is a, I know Paul knows how many units, but maybe half a dozen units going into what was pretty much a commercial site on, on Kimball Avenue. And it made me think that even though we're not talking about infill at this point, but there are some tremendous opportunities with maybe businesses not being able to fill their spaces, that maybe that third floor that they might have could be residential. And along with that, we should probably keep in mind that if they do change to residential, what percentage of those units might be affordable? So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Michael, I see you're unmuted. Did you have something?
No.
Monica?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this one. We received letters from two members of the public regarding a UVM study that talked about the importance and the impact of environmental issues on particularly the people of color in this country as a whole. And at the same time, I wanted to share a very, I shared a link with the commission in advance, in case you had a chance to listen, but also I'll share it again in the link here, of a very interesting report on NPR about something happening in Cleveland that may become a national model in which it takes exactly that common and concern. But their point and what they have been doing in Cleveland in this area is actually ensuring that there is green and open space within every neighborhood. Example, if there is a lot, if there is a, an old home that is set to be demolished, turn that into an area where there can be a solar array that will support the entire neighborhood. So it's actually talking about the importance of securing, not just, you know, pushing everyone together and building up every spot of land within a buildable area or zone, but ensuring that there is open space within that can let everybody within their walkable area have access to the open space and being able to use it for natural resources. So I'll find the link and I'll put it in the chat. But I did want to bring that forward and thank the others for sharing their information.
Right. And just as a follow-up to that, you will, if you haven't seen it already, our new city manager, Jesse Baker, reached out today with a doodle poll about a joint meeting with the city council. Councillor Emery had reached out about the idea of doing a joint meeting around the idea of land use and equity. And since it was a variety of Vermont-based speakers on the issue, kind of a panel-type discussion. So because it was an issue that had come up so many times at our recent meetings, and we had kind of expressed some interest in diving into it, I did kind of agree that it was a good topic for a, a joint discussion. So you'll see a doodle poll kind of by email, looking for a date to set that meeting. Michael?
Yes, I hadn't intended bringing it up this evening since we've got a long agenda, but I have followed up on the UVM study that Monica mentioned a few days ago. And just today, I got a response that one or two of the authors might be, are willing to address the planning commission and place their study in the context of, of our draft environmental protection standards. And I think that would be very worthwhile for us to hear from them. So as soon as I get confirmation, I'll let you, Jesse, you and Paul know, and then see if we can pick a, a date where these, where the two of the authors could address us, talk to us. That's if the rest of you are interested, but it sounds like a very interesting study that they've done.
Anything else? Or Paul Ingalls?
I'd just like to report that my driveway has become a wildlife corridor. We, we were having breakfast on Sunday and a mother raccoon and three babies came down the driveway. It was pretty amazing to see. That's it.
Neat. Thanks. Paul, Connor, any other staff announcements?
Yes, just a couple of things. One, I did, per your request, extend an invitation to our new city manager, Jesse Baker. And she is accepted for your next regular meeting on the 12th. So we'll schedule her time to introduce herself and for you to introduce yourselves. At the end of this meeting, under other business, I'd like to talk a little bit about schedule the next few meetings with you, and also the sort of transition to, back to in-person meetings. And then just quickly, last night, staff gave an update to the city council on the status of developing a climate action plan. And we got some good feedback from council. We received a, through the Unified Planning Work Program of the Regional Planning Commission, the two heads submitted, we received funding for the transportation component as well as the reservation of staff time through our funding to help with the, the overall. So progress being made there. Jessica, Jeff Nick is in the audience, and he was hoping that he might be able to say something under other business, if that's okay.
Sure, sure.
Hi, everyone. I'm here at the meeting, and I guess I'm enjoying having the room all to myself here. But I'm hearing the discussion about environmental protection. And I, I understand all that. It's an important component. However, I had the, I was biking, I took a bike ride out to Moncton the other day. Beautiful day, driving around roads, riding on roads I've never been on. And I see these eight homes in a former hayfield with large expanses of rope grass around them. And they're, you know, miles and miles from the nearest supermarket and pharmacy. And they're 20 miles outside of Burlington. And I was curious, I don't know why they live, they're beautiful homes, but they're out in the middle of this hayfield. And I'm just thinking, it's, you know, it's probably a less expensive place to live. But if you limit the marketability close to Burlington and shut down housing opportunities close to employment centers, the effect is going to be over time, especially is to push people out where you pretty much don't want to have them. We won't discuss sprawl for it. So as the community grows, you know, you've got the situation where you, you will push people out for affordability reasons and just because they can't live anywhere else. Maybe they prefer to live closer to town, where all identities are and gas, you know, you're spending less on gas, less global warming, but yet houses are popping up 20 miles from Burlington. And I know people would prefer to live closer to Burlington. So just keep that in mind as this discussion evolves. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else before we move on to agenda item four? Okay, we'll move on to the continued review of the draft environmental protection standards and other amendments to the land development regulations. So first up, we had asked Arrowood Environmental to look at some of the Habitat Block Boundary Line adjustments that we had in the draft. And we had a great memo, which I was very, very pleased with all the information. And there was very well organized in our packet. So we've probably all seen that. And we have Erin Worthley and Jeff Persons on, and their video has just popped up from Arrowood Environmental to answer any questions we have about the memo. Paul, did you have anything to start off with?
No, just that we asked them to do what you asked for, which was to look at the, using their practical discretion, the implications of the changes that you had proposed. Erin, would you like me to make you a presenter so that you can show things as, as you like? Or would you like me to bring up maps for you?
I don't have anything particular to present. I mean, I can, I can show the maps from the memo, but it may be just as easy for you to do that too. So.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it in the, it's a little bit easier for folks to see one another. So if you want to do a little bit of dialogue, and then as needed, I'll bring up the maps as commissioners or you would like to refer to.
Okay, it looks like Ted, then Monica?
Very briefly, I think what I'd like to do is to see, going through each map and maybe just sort of clarifying, you know, for instance, starting off with, I think, the Potash Brook Lakeshore area and going through that, that, that I think could be most helpful.
Okay. So mainly kind of in order of the memo, just having commissioners like give some feedback or, and ask questions individually. Monica?
Right. And if we're going to do that, also, I wasn't able to remember when I looked at the Habitat Blocks, Paul, which were blocks that we'd made changes to because there's already development planned that is, you know, in the works. So if you could point out the, which Habitat Blocks had that kind of stuff happening in it, which drove our decisions, that would be helpful.
Happy to do that. And I think that Erin and Jeff are also aware of that. But I'm happy to chime in if there's anything that we missed along the way. Okay? So I guess I'll just bring it up in the order of the maps that Erin and Jeff put together, if that's okay.
That sounds great. And I think Monica's point comes up right away.
Well, yeah, the first one, it's further down what Ted was talking about, I think.
Oh, I was thinking about what Monica was saying, because, and Paul, maybe you should fill us in about that purple area on this one.
Sure. So the purple, this, this is Midland Avenue and Allen Road East. This is South Village. So the purple areas here are all areas that were approved years ago for construction and are in fact under construction as we speak. So those Habitat, that, those areas don't exist as forested area. I think that maybe Erin and Jeff had a comment about the area that they, the areas that they circled in yellow though.
Right. Yeah. So throughout these maps, those pink areas are the, are the, the areas that were presented to us as proposed changes to the boundaries of the blocks as we originally presented them. And then anything outlined in yellow was sort of notes that we made as we were doing our assessment and, and some kind of additional thoughts. So in this case, I think this is, yes, this is the one that where development is already underway. And I think the, the main point here is that you are cutting off a chunk of that Forest Block 1 on that, on that western arm. But there is potentially some mitigation possibility by adding in that, what appears to be mostly wetland area anyway, on the western edge of it, to just effectively increase the, the connectivity zone through that forest block up into Habitat Block 5. And what you've wound up with, with that little isolated area off to the west is is, is, is sort of a little area for us that wouldn't have made the grade in our original evaluation methodology. If, if we had been, if we had excluded these pink areas from the get-go, that isolated area to the west would have been too small to include. So I think it's, you know, it, I guess the question is whether it's worth keeping in as a Habitat, as a defined Habitat Block or, or not.
So Michael, Bernie, and then Monica?
Yeah, that isolated is, would there be connectivity with, with adequate culverts and so on across Midland Avenue from the, from HB 5 through to that isolated area? If that's the case, it might be worth keeping. The same applies to the other piece on the, on the left, on the right-hand side, or on the east, I guess, which says, add, add, Habitat needs to be able to connect from HB 1 to HB 5 or from the other way around. So have we made adequate provision under Midland Avenue for wildlife to travel, to move north and south?
Erin, do you want me to jump in?
Well, let's hear what Bernie and Monica says, and then, and then maybe respond, because they may. Bernie?
Well, I was just going to comment that as we go through these, it would be good, when we're finished discussing, to take some kind of action to either, you know, incorporate a change or leave it the way it is or whatever. But, you know, with the intent that after we go through these, we've decided what we're going to do and we can kind of just to rest and move on.
That sounds like a great idea. Monica?
Yeah, my question is, in the isolated area though, it's, I'm just having a hard time seeing underneath. There's some mature trees in there, there's some very large trees, aren't there? I mean, that's an, that's a very wooded area, isn't it?
It appears that way, yeah.
So it's still adding important value that way. So.
Yeah. So Erin, if you want to comment on if it's still worth keeping that, even if we add the other yellow area to make it wider?
I think it's worth keeping if we can, if they can be connected for wildlife, north and south.
Yeah, I don't think, we're, we're not familiar with the, you know, the design plans for that Midland Avenue connection. So I don't know specifically what's there for structures and that sort of thing. We have made recommendations about maintaining, you know, vegetation close to that road, in particular, in that add area to the right where, and, and what's left of HB 1, where it meets the road, but, you know, those, that's a, that's a pretty narrow connection, and that's going to be a vital wildlife movement zone from north to south between 1 and 5. In terms of keeping that isolated area off to the, to the west, you know, In terms of keeping that isolated area off to the, to the west, you know, it certainly has value in you. The, the, the fact that it's mature forest is, I think, you know, it's, it serves a connectivity function. And it's an additional piece of habitat. I think my only point was that given the parameters that we were working with in establishing the forest blocks, that, that in and of itself wouldn't have made the cut. But that doesn't, that doesn't negate us, it's, you know, that there's some remaining value there. And I don't want to jump in anytime.
Ted?
Or Monica?
Jeff, were you jumping in?
Well, I think, I, I think the area that we've noted as being isolated, it, it may have value unto itself for small mammals and for things like whitetail deer and, and red fox and, you know, possibly grouse and turkey along the edge of it or something. But so if you feel that's an important enough habitat value to maintain, then, then by all means do that and incorporate design characteristics that will, you know, promote the movement either through the purple areas in the HB five or HB one or both. By the same token, make sure that the area that we're asking in the east to be added to HB, I guess it would be HB one, that we do the same thing there, that we incorporate design features so that we don't encroach on, you know, its buffer and that we facilitate movements between HB one and HB five. And, and that's all I'd say. So I think it's, it's up to you whether you want to protect the, the isolated area to the west. I think from a deep forest species perspective, it's not critical. That being said, it looks like wonderful forested habitat and will certainly fulfill a role in, in wildlife habitat. So.
Right. Ted and then Paul Ingles?
I just wanted to get a clarification from Paul Connor. Immediately south of the isolated area, what exactly is that?
Immediately south of the isolated area is the town of Shelburne. And I believe that is a parcel owned by Skip Valley. So out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick note that this isolated area, just for, for folks' reference, I, the, the mapping shows that that's largely a wetland. And in the South Village approval, it is listed as open space in their approval. So, you know, I, I guess in terms of major policy actions, I wouldn't lose too much sleep one way or the other on what you choose to do.
Okay, Paul Ingles?
I just wanted to say as we go through this discussion, that there are at least three of us in the council who support the work in its entirety and think of it as the science under which we should make our report to the council. So I just want the people from Arrowwood to understand that there are three of us who are opposed to any changes. And we want to keep their report as.
Okay, well, I guess I would say here, I think changing it to add is probably a good thing that you may, may or may not agree with, but that is a good thing to keep in mind. So do you want to do a straw poll on each of these? I think that might make sense as we go through. I get, I guess I'm hearing, I mean, unless someone else wants to summarize, that we want to keep the isolated area and add the additional yellow area to the habitat block to make it wider. Thumbs up if you like adding and keeping isolated area. I am seeing thumbs up across everyone. And Paul Ingles, did you want to? Okay, so we have unanimous thumbs up on keeping the isolated area as well as adding additional yellow area. Okay.
What about the removal?
The, oh, if someone, the removal is actually being built on currently. So if, I mean.
Can't do anything about that land. It's already long, long time built on.
It clearly is not partly built on, that, that whole area is approved and is under construction.
I mean, we could, we could do a straw poll on adding it back in. So keeping the purple area.
Did Arrowhead miss that information when they did the report?
We did not have that information specifically, yeah. We, we actually looked at that area and noticed the road had been kind of stubbed into that and it looked like it was being proposed. It was on its way to being built all the way through, but weren't aware at the time that the, that the residential development was already underway there as well.
Okay, so we can move on to the next area. We have Habitat Block 11.
So in this case, there was a, a kind of a chunk on the southern edge proposed for removal. And in general, I think we thought that was not an issue for the integrity of the habitat block itself. Although a portion of the removal proposal kind of bites into the, into the width, if you will, of that habitat block finger that runs through the valley and actually drops down over the slope. And it seemed to make sense to kind of include the relatively consistent width at the top of the slope there rather than having it bite in at right angles and drop over the edge of the slope a little bit.
Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs up. Michael, it looks like you have a comment?
Yes, I, I had, I had recommended that we keep that entire piece because it's, it's supportive, it's supportive of the habitat or supportive habitat for the forested area to which it is attached. But it's not of little value and Arrowwood has in the past brought, focused our attention on the importance of supportive habitat to improve the function of the forested habitat blocks that we're looking at. So while retaining a piece of it is a compromise, I, I don't see why we shouldn't keep that, all of it. And I'd like maybe Aaron or one of his colleague can comment on that.
So it's supportive habitat. Is it shrubbery, do you know? Is it young forest? Maybe Erin can look that up.
Yeah, it looks like kind of a mix. There's a few mature trees and, and mostly.
Well, that, that will certainly continue to provide a buffer for the more developed forest that exists to the north. So I think our thought was that relative to some of the other changes you're proposing, that this is not, in our mind, going to have significant impacts on, you know, the wilder species that you seem to have focused on as opposed to, you know, squirrels and raccoons and, and, and animals such as that. And I think that's still our thought. But that being said, you know, I live in the Northeast Kingdom where, you know, we, we have 95% forest in my town. So I'm in favor of you protecting as much as you as a town feel you need to. But have it be understood that we don't feel that a loss of that habitat is going to, you know, significantly impact the, the wilder species within that habitat block.
Okay, I'd seen Ted and then Monica.
Now, the, the closest to the forest, retain in habitat block. Now that, as Paul Connors, would that be able to be built on because it is near a steep slope?
If it's a steep slope or if it is within the 50 feet of the top of the bank of the stream, it would not be able to be built on regardless of, of this action. So I think we'd have to go in and measure it. It's possible that that restriction already covers this. I'll see if I can take a look while you're talking here.
Okay. And the other question is, are we talking about two things? In other words, the, the additional purple that goes into that field, which really is just a field, I think. Is that what we're, is this a two-part question, whether we retain the whole thing or just that retain in that little circle in yellow?
Yeah, I think that's up for us to choose or, you know, make a decision on.
Because I think, again, I think the retain of habitat block, I don't think it's billable. I really question whether there's a necessity to preserve the southern part of that purple, you know, that goes into that field. I, I'm not quite sure if there's a real function there.
Monica and then Michael?
I was going to ask, because most of the edits that we made were a little bit more pronounced in terms of like fingers or whatever. I'm trying to recall what the purpose was for removing this in the first place. Paul, do you recall why we?
I think it was it, this was a parcel that is potentially developable and it's only a few hundred feet off Shelburne Road. And so as you're thinking about your balance of priorities, if, if there was going to be room for housing, would this location drive the priority be towards housing? To answer Ted's question, it's tough to tell from the mapping. I think that the top of the bank may be essentially where where Erin and Jeff drew the line there. But it's, it's a little bit hard to see from this remote mapping.
Yeah, I, I pulled it up on my end too, Paul. It looks like it's, it's variable. About half of our outlined area goes over the bank and half of it's on top of the bank. But it looks like all of the area we've outlined is well within 50 feet of the top of the bank. So if that's your measurement, then I think it's, it would be considered undevelopable anyways.
No, you're saying all of the area. You mean the, the outlined yellow or the whole purple?
All of the outlined yellow is within 50 feet of the top.
Okay.
And some of the other as well, but.
Well, I support their recommendation of retaining the piece that they've isolated.
Right. I would agree.
You, you.
I haven't spoken before, Monica.
No, I know. We're not, we're not voting yet. Go ahead, go ahead, Michael.
Well, Arrowhead has themselves chose, outlined that purple area for a reason. And I suspect the reason is that they, you know, that's a supporting, contiguous supporting habitat, shrubby areas or others provide important feeding and breeding habitats for wildlife, which would normally reside most of the time in, in the forested area. So it's important. They've, Arrowhead has said it's important and maybe we should understand why and why they now feel it's not so important.
I, I believe, this is Jeff Parsons, I believe we felt that it may have served an important feeding function, not necessarily a breeding function. Unless, unless it is a shrubbery habitat or sapling habitat, in which case you might get something that's, you know, breeds an early successional habitat. But I don't think it, it, it had that much shrub and sapling habitat on it to where you might think that it's breeding habitat for one of those species.
No, I, I agree because you've stated in your prior reports, both feeding and breeding. So, yeah. I don't, you know, I, I just feel giving up anything that supports wildlife in, 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 in the habitats that we've outlined is worth retaining. But if the other commissioners don't think it's worthwhile, fine. I think we should keep as much as we can, especially, well, I don't have to go into the whole climate change issue and and equity and all the rest of that we are planning to discuss. But I think every, every bit of wildlife habitat, supportive, supporting habitat, whether it's feeding or breeding or feeding only, is worth keeping.
Okay, Paul Ingles?
Well, there's other aspects that is done wildlife. And the ordinance that we're supposed to be reacting to is is actually looking for us to find open space. It's disturbing when we are constantly trying to find places for developers to build rather than responding to the ordinance and finding places for open space, for landscapes, forest blocks. There are lots of reasons to have open space in South Burlington and we're losing it.
Can I make one more comment? Arrowhead has, you know, ranked the parameter ranking and supporting habitat ranks equal to forested areas, core forests, surface water and wetland. There are other areas that rank lower, but they all rank equally important.
Ted?
Don't need to belabor it, but I really do think, one, because of the, it's so close to the edge that not a lot's going to be able to be built there. And it may be a very small amount into the south, you know, the south part of the purple. So I, I do agree with Monica in this case. In most cases, I don't agree with, you know, taking space like that. But in this one, I don't, I don't sense that Arrowhead is pretty emphatic that this is a really important one. So that's just my feeling.
Okay, anything else? I think it sounds like Ted and Monica were both supporting retaining the yellow, so adding the yellow back in. But not the southern purple area. Is that what I was hearing? Okay, so I would be in support of that also. It looks like Bernie's waving his hands. Anyone else for the yellow? Okay, so it seems like that's for in support of keeping or adding the yellow part back in.
Well, in the absence of anything else, I'd have to say I, I support that too. It's the least, that's the least we can get.
Yes, better than removing all of it is what I'm hearing. Very good. Okay, so the next Cheese Factory Dorset Habitat Block Two looks like potential impact low to forest habitat moderate to regional connectivity.
So I can just note that where Erin and Jeff have shown a likely wetland has in fact been mapped as a wetland. There is a application in front of the Development Review Board. It has already been through city council. And city council gave it a okay under interim zoning that basically shows a wetland where Erin and Jeff do. And there's two homes that would be located sort of in the left-hand portion of the U there in, in between the yellow. And a reminder to commissioners that the reason that you moved this one was because there was a substantial wetland that was going to provide the, the vast majority of the connectivity that you felt that that was providing what you needed back in October.
What's the green, what's the green rectangle in the middle? What is the green rectangle in the middle of that purple area?
It designates a habitat connector.
That was something you had drawn in as a commission to show a connector through there, just in case the wetland didn't show up as thoroughly as you thought in October, and it has shown up where you thought it would be.
And does the delineated area, the yellow lined area include a 100-foot buffer?
The yellow boundary is an approximate conceptualization of the wetland edge based on what we can see from remote sources. And so it's not a ground delineation, what we're showing there. It's just a general approximation and is not intended to include any buffer.
And then, Michael, so that would mean that according to our new regulations, the new draft, there would be a 100-foot buffer added, the delineated wetlands. Great. Bernie, you want to hit your hand up?
I was just going to ask about the buffer, so that.
Okay, Monica?
So can I, Paul, did you say that in the left U, the larger U, the city council has since approved building there?
They have approved a two lots, two housing units on two lots in there. They're currently in front of the Development Review Board under the current regulations.
What's the name of that road there?
Sadie Lane is the name of the little road north of it.
I got it. I remember now.
Any thoughts or questions or so? Potential impact low because the connectivity and wetland protections?
Well, if the council has gone over our heads.
Here, let's go with Michael, because we heard most of what you just said. So Michael and then Monica.
If the council has already gone over our heads and approved the two lots in that U there, what's the, what are we, what are we here for? Why are we being consulted even? I'm a little stunned that the council has approved something that's in a habitat block.
Well, I guess, I guess what I would say to that is our, our draft, you know, I think they usually look at our draft, and our draft did not include that. So I wouldn't necessarily say they went over our heads. You know, they were looking at our, at our draft. So, you know.
It's a consequence, cutting things off that, then unintended consequences. Unfortunately.
Okay, Monica.
What I was trying to say is that what was obviously important to us was the connectivity, and we've proven now since that there is wetland there, so we do have the connectivity. So I support leaving that one off the map as we have it in our draft.
Okay. Any thoughts on that or comment or others in support of what Monica just said? So one, two, three, four, and, Michael, I guess.
I'm abstain.
Okay, and abstain. So that does pass to keep it as is with our mapped habitat connector and knowing that there are wetlands there as well. So. Okay, we can move on to the next one, which is the Underwood area Habitat Block Five. Thoughts on this one?
I support leaving our changes as we have drafted them.
I would say we've had, the commission has had a tremendous amount of public input about this particular finger, about its importance as a habitat and its connection to a habitat corridor connector that runs through it from east, west to east. It's fairly heavily wooded with young, young forest, and there's a wetland in there somewhere. I'm, I'm not in favor of removing it. It's an important piece of the Great Swamp. We chose not to take Arrowood's, I think, advice on supportive habitat around these habitat blocks. So I think this is, we should keep it. It's a very, I think it's been, been shown by many members of the public who maybe live in that, in that general vicinity, and others have asked the commission not to remove it.
May I speak?
Jeff, you want to respond to that? Go ahead.
Yeah. I think that if you look at this little, little piece and land to the west of it and the other avenues that wildlife have to move to the west out of the Great Swamp, this is one place where, you know, it does remain in, in, in the purple area, but also to the areas southwest and into the west, not completely developed. And if you go up to, you know, Upswept and South Point and areas further to the south, it seems as if you have more, you know, roads lined with houses and greater development. So I think this area may provide some more permeable landscape for wildlife to move to the west. And granted, you have Spear Street there, but then right across Spear Street, you have pretty wooded and, and, you know, almost rural backyards and houses that are fairly widely spaced. So, you know, it may provide some avenue for the wildlife that use the Great Swamp to move out of the Great Swamp and, you know, more to the west and to the northwest or, you know, in the northern part of the Great Swamp. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Someone, Monica, you were saying something?
It sounds to me, if there's anything that would happen differently here, it would be something like a connector rather than this extension of the original map. Because that area that is currently to the west, our purple is buildable. It's built on, so it's going to be, it's outside of what we're talking about regularly. And that would provide, if anything, I think we're looking at potentially talking about replacing that purple block with a connector, but that's not connected to a habitat block. Then we're going to add that connector, all kinds of connectors we can add all over the place. And I don't know that, I don't know that that meets definition. I asked her for other connector. The answer was no. This definition and this is on the map, those connectors most important. If we're opening up now, question of where should all connectors be? There's all kinds of places we can talk about. That's, it just threw to me because, right, that's not developed. It will be developed, that it will be. So either we need to protect the connectivity, which is not ending at the purple. It's all the way across here. Or we have and that, that's the definition of what the connect are that we've already mapped and reopening all of that. So.
That's the reason we're here, is to review things that we're not sure we've done correctly. And.
Biggest part of the habitat block is not, I've got this land and look closely at this. Being that chunk of the habitat block or connect, but then doing nothing with the land next to it, does anything for connectivity? There will be of houses there. So we either concerned about some connectivity from Habitat Block to the Pheasant Way area. If that is in fact, that Arrowood finds critical, I would assume that from Arrowood instead a connector here.
Your, your, oh, yeah, it's breaking up a lot, Monica.
I'm breaking up?
Yeah, I think we heard most of it though. Ted, you had your hand up? No? Okay, Paul?
Well, Monica and I walked that property, and that really is that purple area, both of the purple areas are extensions of the Great Swamp. I mean, it was very wet in there. And, you know, we're in the midst of a two-year drought, and it still was pretty wet. So.
That wasn't the area. The wet area is, it's still is purple. This is the area that's behind two large apartment buildings to the south. This is, this is the, this is west wetland area.
That's the area where the guy who lives at the end of South Point Drive has a sign saying this is a wildlife corridor, you know, humans stay out or something like that, you know? This, this, it's really, removing this is really a favor to the people who own it and want to develop it. That's really all it is.
To that, I would say the impact of it from Arrow is low. That if the con is that we need connectivity all the way across, say, we need to establish a vector, and I would propose we establish a connector north, which is right under, Underwood, or a connector through there. I mean, I would, I would support the conversation about establishing a connector. But in my mind, giving anybody any favor logically at the fact that we're about to block the connectivity. So connectivity is the key here. Purple should be altered, become a green in some measure.
Okay, so I saw Ted's hand and then Bernie's and then Michael's.
Paul, I have a question. Looks like there's a, there's a road sort of that ending in the south and a road ending to the north. Now, if we, if we do have this as protected area, I assume a road wouldn't go through, but would a bike path be able to go through? An unpaved bike path or gravel path of sorts?
So Ted, the way that you've written the regulations, if there's a roadway or a path on the official map, then that would be permissible. Here, there is a roadway currently shown. You can adjust the official map as you choose. You know, this is private land, and so if there's not adjacent development, the city would of course have to work with the property owner or to obtain the rights to do that. It is private land. So. But within the regulations, a planned roadway or a planned repath could cross if it's on the official map, which is the city's policy.
Okay, thank you.
Who's next?
May I interject something?
You're muted, Jessica.
It was Bernie and then?
Me.
Michael.
I'll just be brief. I support removing the purple like we had originally talked about. We'd asked Arrowood to take a look at it with respect to doing a reality check on our original, our original plan. And I haven't seen anything or heard anything that would cause us to change what we originally recommended.
And then it was Michael.
Well, I think we ought to have the history correct here. This was not on our original plan. This was brought to us by the owner of this particular property. And the suggestion to lop off this so-called finger and a few others. Most of the others are a lot less relevant to wildlife. And they just make the habitat block look, look nice without any squiggly lines. And this is a favor to one landowner. Let's not beat about the bush. I mean, that is the fact. We did it. And at the time we did it, I have to say, Mia Koppa had too damn stupid and asleep at the wheel to know what was going on. I think it was a bad decision of the planning commission to go along with the suggestions made by this particular landowner.
I will go with Bernie and then Ariel.
I'm just going to comment that I strongly disagree with, with Michael's comment. That's not the way I remember it at all when we had the discussion on removing this. And I certainly never viewed it as a favor to anybody.
Well, we got an email on September the 27th last year, and that was the start of this whole idea to remove these fingers. You can go back to the records.
He was, Michael, so, you know, it's my memory.
Well, it's, it's in the record. You can look it up. Let's leave it at that. We can agree to disagree. But that's the history.
I, I call on Ariel.
Hi, yes, I just want to give my two cents. I actually, my, my apartment faces the land that we're, are under discussion right now. And I'd like to say that what has taken place is that trails have been built, which are used by hikers and cross-country skiers as well as wildlife. I've actually taken photos of various different kinds of animal tracks that I've seen while taking walks. And it's actually used as a human life corridor as well to go into HB5 to go into the South Burlington Woods. And then if you do it right, you can go from South Village into HB5 around the Upswept Lane to the other finger, walk down that walkway, and then have a view of overlook and watch the sun go down and go back. So it would be, right now, it's a very charming connector and really, I think, makes the whole area much more pleasant to live in for both the developments. And I would hate to see it go. I really would.
Okay, so we're taking a little bit of public comment here for a minute. We've been away from the chat. Andrew, I know you would ask if we were doing public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica. So I, I agree with Ariel. I actually walk that area all the time and walk it all winter. And I tell you, it would break my heart to see that developed. It's clearly used by all the wildlife in the Great Swamp. There's tracks all throughout it. It's not a young forest. It's not a completely mature forest, but it feels to me like a 30, 40-year-old forest. There are some larger trees in there, and, and the whole thing really is, is wooded. And I guess I just don't understand really what we're talking about here. Why would we agree as a city to develop what looks like a 10-acre of forested parcel that's clearly used by all the wildlife that connects to the most important habitat in the city? Like, why, what's the purpose of allowing that piece to be developed? It just seems to go against everything that we're intending to do. So that's, that's my comment.
So, you know, I have one of the interactive maps up, and it does look like a lot of it's going to be within the 100-foot buffer of the wetland. So just kind of looking at that buffer.
Can I add one more thing?
Okay, go ahead.
There's actually. There's actually, um, a large murder of crows that lives in that area. And they, I think, hunt or over the wetlands, but they settle there every night. And there's actually, I would say, between a hot, 50 and 100 of them at night. So, um, my point basically is that whether or not this was intended to be, um, developed or not, you know, years ago, or whenever this project was taken on, it has been developed by the wildlife for a use since that time. And, um, and then I would like to keep that.
Okay, so I guess I, I, um, kind of maybe echo some of the the discussion. I see a note here from Sandy Dooley, um, being troubled by their characterizations about the change. And, you know, I think there are a lot of things we talked about and not just about the landowner. Um, you know, the fact that there's been investment in, in two ends of a road. Um, in general, when we talked about these, these fingers, we talked about like kind of leading wildlife off on almost a dead end where there wasn't a good connection, where they would wind up going across roads or things. So I know, you know, it wasn't just about the development and I, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we did talk about multiple different things with each of these areas. So, you know, I, it's kind of where we wound up. And, um, I guess I, I don't know, I'm kind of up in the air about this one because, I mean, the assessment is low, does kind of lead wildlife towards Spear Street, but it is connected to the Great Swamp. So, I don't know. It looks like, Monica, you have a comment?
Well, what, what I heard when Arrowood presented the very first time and what we went back to ask them in this is, are any of the changes that we're proposing going to cause harm to the core? That's what our request was. And the answer that's come back is that it has low impact on the core. So the question of what are, why are we thinking about this? What's important for us to protect is this core habitat block, which we have done. And in addition to that, we've added protections for wetlands, which are all just outside of the habitat block and will likely extend into some of this pink area. So the wetland protection has been increased. The habitat block is intact. And that is why I supported removal of these two pieces. There is also the bike path that's planned to go there. So there's going to be more connectivity, um, more human connectivity that is going to be pushing the wildlife into some changes. So, uh, just a reminder that it's the habitat block protection that we were most concerned about. And the answer that's come back to us is the habitat block is protected with this change. So I still support the changes we made it, knowing that the wetlands also that we've added protection to will probably ebb into some of that. And that will, uh, keep that land protected. So just a reminder, the habitat block is protected with this change.
Okay, I feel like somebody else had their hand up.
Yes, um, I think there were two, two views about this, whether, whether we were talking about only the habitat core or the habitat block itself, whether these, whether lopping off any of these pink areas would have a negative impact on, on the habitat block itself, not necessarily just the core. So I, I think we need to understand that. That it's not just the core we're talking about. And, and I'm not sure, uh, yes, they, sorry, um, Arrowood says it won't impact the available core or interior of the forest block. But every time you take something off, the core gets closer to the outside. I mean, it's, I know there's development around it, but, uh, from, from a, a, a human habitation point of view, the people north and south, the removal of this will have a significant impact. It's, it is really, uh, wonderful to have wildlife close, close to your home. And, uh, and, and all of this, all of these removals impact biodiversity in South Burlington, um, put more pressure on it.
Can we do a straw poll, Jessica? I mean, we're, are we kind of, maybe, maybe we're so tied here that we'll have to revisit this one versus spending more time on it. Should we just do a straw poll?
Sure, I guess the straw poll would be to make, leave it as mapped.
Well, the straw poll is to keep it as we proposed it, which is to have removed the purple. So keep the purple off the map.
Right. Well, the current action of the planning commission is to remove these two purple areas from the draft. That, that's what was voted on in October. So if you, if there was a desire to change that, that would be good to know.
Uh, if I may interject one small, um, piece of information. Um, right now, the two communities of South Point and South Village are connected by, just by regular paths. It's nothing that you would exactly take a bicycle on. But there is actually, um, there is no division right now. It's very easy to get from one to the other by walking.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so I guess we would need a straw poll to, um, add them back in. That would be a change from our current motion. So who would want to add these back in, um, as, sort of add the purple back?
What happened to Ted? First Ted?
Ted is there and voting yes. And
I don't see Ted.
Oh, um, maybe you need to change your size. I guess, I feel like this one should get added back in because of the Great Swamp connection. So, um, so it's, it looks like there's, because there's four of us to add it back in. You know, it sounds like there's connectivity between neighborhoods. There is some, already it's in the wetland buffer. So I feel like limited development potential because of that. So this adds kind of forest protection.
Jessica, can I ask for, um, a comparative vote on that? If for this lower portion, if the, if the majority says to keep it, um, can I see a straw poll on rather than keeping this block and then ending it? Could I see, um, changing that block to instead a connectivity band to Spear Street? And I'm not sure how wide that would need to be. But in this case, adding a connectivity band, replacing this habitat finger block with, um, a more narrow, but connectivity all the way across Spear, to protect the connectivity there. Does that make sense?
No.
No.
So, take the same amount of, take the same amount of acreage and instead of having it in like almost a square, make it a skinnier line that goes all the way to Spear across one end because the, the area, the land on the left will be developed and then that's gonna take your connectivity. So I, I, what I'm proposing is that in this, for this area, rather than leaving that shape as is, replace, removing that, but adding a connectivity, a habitat, um, connector in there.
But that's the shape or the area that Arrowood identified as, as habitat.
With low impact. Okay, that's fine. If you guys don't want to take that, I, I'm, that's fine. I'm just suggesting a straw poll, but if it, it sounds like it's not gonna go very far. So, that's fine.
Are you proposing a, a narrow strip on the north or the south side of these properties?
My, my proposal would be to take the current lower block of habitat and instead of making it the one block that basically is filling neighborhood to neighborhood on the only, the east side of the parcel, to instead make it a quarter of its height and spread it all the way across the northern part of the parcel next to the road, giving the connectivity across to Spear Street that a number of people mentioned connectivity being important.
That's, connectivity is already there. They, I mean, wildlife seems to find itself from the wooded areas on the west side of Spear Street all the way through this property. And, and from what
The property isn't built on right now. It's going to be built on. The, the, the part off here is going to, that's gonna stop that connectivity. So if we instead turned that lower purple one into a, a habitat connector, is what I'm proposing.
Well, that may be the case, but the, the developer may provide for, for that habitat path, which is there, which you and Ted have already seen and has been commented on by, by the neighbors. Anyway, uh, we should probably move on, sorry, to have digress.
Just for clarification, Monica, you're saying, take the same sort of square footage or acreage? Or cut this in half and then take one half and take it to Spear Street? So it's a east and west? Of the same amount of square footage of connectivity? I would, I would support that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that, that interferes with the integrity of the whole piece in a, it, it, right now, it's integral with
You've got Arrowood right here with us. Maybe Arrowood, Michael, can let us know what they think about what's up here? Cause I'm, I'm open to listening to it as well. If it's we've got Arrowood, let's see what they say.
Yeah, so, you know, to be clear, any contiguous forested or shrubland areas that meet certain criteria were included in the forest blocks. And so that's why these areas were included. We also, as you know, um, did some sort of preliminary modeling on connectivity habitat between habitat blocks. More as a function of, um, scoring and ranking the blocks themselves rather than, um, really diving deep into the, into that connectivity. Um, but I will say that this, this area did not rank highly in our connectivity modeling. Um, and it's really because there's, there's, yes, there's, there is this, um, kind of patchwork of woods to the west across Spear Street, but it's pretty, um, broken up by the development that's there. And so in the modeling that we did, that had a pretty significant impact on the, on the, the quality of the connectivity habitat as you move west out of this block. But that forested area is contiguous to Block Five. Um, and it, you know, it has value i- i- as a, as a piece of that block. And it adds, it adds area and foraging habitat. And certainly folks have attested to the fact that it's being used. I think, you know, that extending that connectivity all the way to Spear Street certainly isn't a bad idea by any stretch of the imagination. I think that's, uh, you know, the more connectivity you have on the greater landscape, the better. Um, there is already a, a lot, what looks like a large, uh, residence right there, just south of, is that South, South Point Drive? And that's presumably managed right, yeah, right in there. And so that's presumably managed as lawn and yard. And, um, so I think the, the connectivity value through there is, is not nonexistent, but it's, it's, um, compromised, we'll say. So, you know, and so our, our, our objective in this particular, uh, piece of the project was to, as was mentioned, to sort of identify the, um, the potential impacts that these removals or changes would have to the integrity of the block as a whole. And so in that case, we found this is relatively low. But we did mention that, that this, this does potentially function to have some connectivity function. I think that's true. And it, it's a hard call to, with the existing development there. You know, where you'd get more bang for your buck from a wildlife perspective. But certainly if most of that pink area is wetland anyways, and that's gonna be protected, I think, you know, extending further to the west to help that Spear Street extension is going to be, um, good. But you've got other things going on there that are gonna affect it as well.
Bernie and then Paul Connor?
Well, so I was just gonna comment that, you know, we've already voted, it was four to to put it back. Um, Monica offered a kind of a friendly amendment to, to put a, um, you know, a narrow corridor in. So, um, you know, I guess, you know, to move things along, you know, maybe we can just see if people are interested in a narrow corridor or not. And if not, then it's four to two to put it back and we can move on.
I think, I agree with Bernie. We should move on. We've made, done a straw poll.
Okay, Paul Connor, did you have something before we?
Um, I was gonna speak about the sort of, the, the developability of the property if, if the corridor is, is replacing. But if you're not gonna go in that direction, I don't think I need to say anything.
Yeah, no, actually, that would be helpful because I'm not super excited about my vote now that we just talked more about connectivity. Yeah, if you could do that, that would be helpful.
About developability?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what I was gonna say is that if you were to replace this purple with a, um, with an east-west connection along the northern edge, I, I think you run into some challenges from how the rest of the property gets developed. So one, as Aaron points out, there's a house at the west end. And then two, the way that this property would wind up getting access for any development would be it, the, the, the natural way would be to come off South Point Drive. And so then the developer and the development review board would be in a tricky spot of deciding to either cut the corridor or to access from South Village and sort of make this big long lollipop. It just might be, become challenging in that area. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's for you all to figure out. I, I didn't want to just mention one other thing. This is a completely appropriate dialogue on the subject of wildlife and habitat connectivity. But, um, I would caution the commissioners. There's been a little bit of discussion about sort of the enjoyment of this area from adjacent neighborhoods. And to be fair, this is private property that is, um, that is not part of what is the open space of those neighborhoods. And so from a planning perspective, if the city wanted to proceed and acquire that and make it a public amenity, then certainly that can happen. But I, I don't know that from a land use zoning perspective, it's fair to say that a piece of land should be kept to, for the enjoyment of adjacent. That said, from a wildlife perspective, please continue, you know, your dialogue as you're, as you're deciding what's appropriate.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, I guess, I guess what I was gonna say is that I'm actually not excited about the way I voted because I was really thinking about what Jeff said about habitat coming into this area and making it across Spear Street. And now that we just talked about how there's more development there, it's a patchwork and there's really no corridor. I actually don't support the straw poll to add it back in. So I guess that would leave it as, with the purple area removed. And then Monica, you had, you wanted to make a vote about the the connection.
Well, the, the straw poll would be three, three then, right?
It would be three, three, which would mean there'd be no change from our previous vote, which was, with the purple areas not part of the habitat block.
And in terms of the connectivity, I'm happy to continue to suggest the straw poll on that. But I've learned from what they were just talking about and from Paul's point that the connectivity, I do think it opens a can of worms honestly to add a connector there because, as I said, there are many different areas in the city where we could just add connectivity as well. And we opted to not do that. We opted to stay only with the habitat block connectors where Arrowood And we opted to not do that. We opted to stay only with the habitat block connectors where Arrowood mapped them. So I, so no matter how we voted on the purple, I would recommend to not vote on the conversation about the connectivity piece.
Okay, so no, no more voting on that piece then. Anything else on this or can we move on to the next one?
I had one question.
Overed a couple of times. Can we just clarify where we're at and, and then move on just so we know?
Okay, because I changed my vote on the straw poll, we're at three, three. So there's no change to what was in the draft, which means the purple area is not part of the habitat block.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question of Arrowood? When you remove something, part of the habitat, habitat block, does that mean that the core then, could you measuring from the outside to a certain distance in the core will become smaller? Is that correct? If you take away part of the not core forest?
Yeah, so it depends, it depends on the geometry, right? And in this case, in that green hatched area is what we've mapped as the core of that habitat block. And that's using
I understand it might not apply in this case. It was a general question.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in many cases it does. It certainly does. In this case, in this case, I think at least using the conventional definition of core as, as we've adopted here, which is a hundred meters from the edge of the block. That wouldn't change the, the mapped core area in this particular case.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Bernie and then Paul.
So, or just because I was, I was just going to suggest that you know, we're, we've still got four more of these to go and we've got a lot left on our agenda and it is important to have these conversations, but you know, unless there's anything new to add on this one, I really suggest that we, we kind of keep moving.
Okay, very good. So Meadowland Habitat Block Seven. We have the map up. The purple area was removed. It looks like the analysis shows potential impact to be low.
This is an interesting one. That, that area that's proposed for removal is almost entirely shrub. I don't think there's, there's much, if any, mature tree in there. So it was included in the, in the habitat block by, by definition as being, you know, contiguous shrubland. And this would as opposed to the previous one, impact that core area. But overall, it's a, it's a relatively small piece of this large habitat block.
Yeah, I see that in this case it would reduce the size of the core. It would also eliminate foraging area, particularly I think for raptors. Which are which have a hard time making a living here.
Right, so in the interest of what Bernie was saying, so our current commission vote and draft has the purple area not included. So we would want to a straw poll on who would want to add it back in. So we have three to add it back in. Anyone else? Okay, so keep as is based on the analysis.
Yes, and sorry, but if they're in order to maintain the core, because that's the big question, are we harming the core? And the answer to this is, well, it's a low impact, but we are harming the core because we're reducing it. Is there a, Arrowood, can you recommend a midpoint here as you did before? That would allow us to keep that core protected, but not necessarily go that full extension? And would people agree to that? Like in that other, in, in Habitat Block 11, you provided, you retained this in order to, and is there a way you could give us a retain this in order to protect that habitat? That core area?
Aaron, I believe you can do that. And I, this Jeff Parsons, I think it's a great idea from a, you know, wildlife perspective.
So can I propose that we do a straw poll of a midpoint here, which is to accept Arrowood's redrawing of this purple to accept the area that will protect the core and remove the part that does not impact the core?
Yep. So
Could I just ask a question because that looks like, let me find it. About maybe 10 acres, that purple area? Which means if we took it out, the habitat block would also be reduced by about 10 acres. Are you suggesting that maybe we would reduce it? Leave only half of it, say?
I'm, I'm suggesting that Arrowood provide us with the drawing of the measurement to ensure that the core has its protective
Buffer.
Boundary buffer around it. And anything that is beyond that protective buffer is removed.
So I'll just clear here that the, the core in this case, that green hatched area is a function of the, of the boundary of the habitat block as mapped. And so this, this extension, this purple area is, is wide enough to have, you know, basically a hundred meters interior space that gives that core finger space to come out. If we take any of that purple area off, that finger of core will be reduced if you're, continue to measure it in the same fashion. Now, we could talk about, you know, chopping that purple area in half north to south so that you don't impact what's currently mapped as core. So you're basically keeping, you know, a little bit more. We could talk about, you know, going a hundred meters off the edge of the forest, which was right about where that yellow line would be. And that would retain sort of the current forested core area. And provide a, a healthy buffer to that forested environment with what's that currently a shrubby area.
Any, any comments on that? Straw poll on that idea of the buffer to the forested area? Monica, Ted, so three positives, Bernie. Okay.
What's the question? What is the question, Jessica?
The straw poll is using the yellow area. So we're, we're, we're including the buffer from the actual forest. So kind of split the difference.
Okay. Yeah, because looking, looking at old areas, originally that whole, that was forested and it's been cut down at some point and now it's just shrubland. But yeah, okay. I understand.
Had me, Bernie, Monica, Ted, Michael. Okay, so we have enough. We'll go with that. The yellow line. Okay, Wheeler Hill Farm Habitat Block 12. So we have potential impact low with recommended adjustment. And we have two suggested adjustments to get this area to low.
So I'll just say that I'll recommend that we we make the changes as recommended by Arrowood, which is to retain the area they're showing as retained and to remove the area they're showing as removed, just to hopefully move things along a little bit.
Okay. We, that makes a lot of sense to kind of a bigger, wider swath. In support of that?
Jessica, when you have a moment, Jeff, Nick would like to speak.
Okay, so let's do that now before we weigh in on what Bernie suggested. Jeff, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks. We've got a number of questions and concerns. Obviously, this is a large part of this property. And remind everybody that we brought in a plan about four years ago now that showed much of that area maintained, but not nearly as much as you show. And I guess a question for your consultants is, and I would, and I did point out last time in the ECO's plan here, the, and I assume that the regional planning commission hired a, an expert to look at these critical habitats and forest, forest integrity, they call it. And the hill farm is not on the map. So the regional plan does not consider this critical habitat at all. It encourages growth in this area. So there's a conflict with the regional plan. But I guess the one question I have is something against the interstate. And to me, that's counterintuitive to encourage wildlife along the interstate. And I guess, does, do critical habitats, as you describe them, do they show robust wildlife here in interstate? I think that doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's one question. To the area of, along the interstate, you're still maintaining a purple area up there. That's not really forest. That's a hedge row.
Just to be clear, the purple was proposed to be removed from the habitat block by the planning commission.
Right.
So, so as drafted, the purple would not be a habitat.
So you, but you maintain, you're removing what says removed.
That's Arrowood's additional suggestion to remove more.
Oh, I see. So purple is?
Purple was what the planning commission decided to remove
Yep.
back in the fall. Yellow is Arrowood's recommendation tonight to add back in the part in the middle and to remove additional land up top.
So the purple is by the interstate is remaining habitat or not?
As drafted currently, what the planning commission voted on back in the fall was to remove it from the habitat block. So to not be a habitat.
So everything where it says remove and the purple by the interstate would be removed?
That's what Arrowood is, is pending, but this is the commission's dialogue.
So if, if we put that back in, retain, again, it's, it's a, it's a huge amount of acreage. And I, I still don't understand what would be allowed within the habitat block if you're going to allow private ownership of the habitat block or some incremental development within a habitat block. Those questions I don't think have an answer to that. At least I have heard answers to those. But I guess I'd like to know, is habitat critical up against the interstate and is there as much wildlife there as in other places?
Aaron, Jeff?
Well, we're recommending that the arm to the east not be protected. And the most important critical habitat would be the core habitat. But the, which is the striped green, but the other areas along 89 would provide a buffer that whether they're alongside the freeway or not, and perhaps even more importantly, alongside the freeway. So the forest block includes land that isn't core along the freeway and you wouldn't expect during the daytime for there to be, you know, your wilder species up in that area. But they might go up into that area at the middle, in the middle of the night to hunt. Probably not to breed. But, you know, hunting for wildlife is, is of course a, a critical function. So we see the area along the freeway as wildlife habitat and supporting the core and providing a buffer to the core further to the south. So it's not inconsequential habitat in, in our view.
And I'm, I'm looking at this plan and calling it core forest, core forest and habitat blocks. I don't know if there's going to be some distinction between the really critical core forest, which, which in our initial plan showed that we were leaving that intact. We're leaving much of that area intact to be planned to. But this is just a huge amount of property that's been, been taken away. And, and, and I guess the question is also moving forward, would we as an app, future applicant have a chance to weigh in and bring our own experts in? To show how it might work with some a lesser, you know, a little less of a buffer, if you will, or at least some, some potential mitigation for the property owner, that we could do a little bit more with that area. So I guess I'll leave that for a future question for the planning commission.
Ted, you have your hand up?
For Paul Connor, the, the retained area that we're talking about, just a real guess of how many acres that is? It does not seem like a significant part.
I just measured it. It's about four and a quarter acres.
And the whole property of this is how much? How many acres?
Ten.
Hundred and eight.
So that's considered significant part? I don't think so.
The whole property is either a hundred and eight or a hundred and thirteen acres, depending what map you look at.
Ted, is your question about the yellow area that's listed as retained or the entirety of the habitat block of the property?
And you're muted.
I was referring to the retained part. And I think Bernie said it was four acres. So that's, that was my answer or question.
Okay, so the piece that says retain on it, like we did remove that based on the aerial photographs. Like, you know, the one I'm looking at on our interactive map has, you know, mostly kind of mowed area with a few trees scattered around in it, which was why we had adjusted that line at the time. You know, I think noting that it was a very large part of property and the land use was wouldn't be considered first.
We shouldn't forget that this
No, yeah, Monica, their hand up.
It looks like the portion that they mark as retained, what it's doing is not so much what's underneath it, but it looks like it's adding the necessary buffer back on the core. When we made the recommendation to remove that piece, we didn't know exactly where the core was. And so this map helps us see that. And that's why that new retain line makes sense. And I guess what I would, what I would ask Arrowood is if the acreage in the retain, it's not even really a numbers thing. I'm looking at where the core is up above. And I would like to see every tree remain that can, please. But I am looking at where this skinny part of the core is up on the highway. And I do wonder if there, if there isn't more of the habitat block there that could potentially be removed if it's helpful to the the whole area there. Because the primary thing that we need to protect is this core and that's why we need to add back in that retain area. So I guess what I'm just saying is if if that land, if, if there's a reason to keep the other part of the habitat block that's at 189, that's at 89, that you did not indicate could be removed, then let's keep it. But if it looks like more could be removed, if, that if it's not critical, then that's something to keep in mind. Otherwise, I would accept their recommendations.
So can we do?
So can we do just a straw poll on the recommendations as shown? The removing the yellow and retaining what's retained, and the purple stays off as...
Yeah, can we, let's do two straw polls. Or you want to do the recommendations as recommended? And Michael, you did have your hand up. We can do that first.
Yeah, I just wanted us not to forget that this particular habitat block connects, is one of the most important in South Burlington, and runs north-south, runs all the way through the Wheeler Nature Park and further south. So it's not, we can't look at it in isolation here, which is, we're only looking at the hill property. But, so we shouldn't forget that, because it's crucial. That's the only comment I want to make.
Okay. Well, do you think, actually, we want to do two different straw polls? Because one is to make a change, I guess they're both to make different changes to what's in our current draft. So I guess starting at the top of the page, is there interest in removing that kind of finger along 89 at the north end? I would remove that. You know, you talked about interstate. Okay, so it looks like two votes to remove that.
It's hard for me to do that, those separate. Jessica, I feel like I'm looking at the size of the habitat block as a whole. And I would support removing that acreage if I knew we were adding the other acreage, which is more important because it's by the core, if that makes sense? Because there's very mature trees in that remove area that are performing an important job. And if we're asking them to retain this other habitat block, there's an opportunity for more future mature trees to replace and provide that function. So I have a few times voting separately.
Okay, so who is in favor of making the changes suggested by Arrowood here? So it looks like we have two and a half, three, 10 to three. Okay, so we have three, so basically three, three. So I guess no change to the draft. So that, I'm sorry, so Bernie, it was Bernie, Monica, and Ted were voting to make the changes outlined in yellow.
Right, which is a change to what our original draft was, to incorporate Arrowood's current recommendation.
Okay. Unless there's other discussion. Centennial Woods Habitat Block 21. This was the one that we had talked about being in the Form-based code area. Is that correct, Paul, or just the city center zoning?
This is within the Form-based code, yes. There's, and I will note that Aaron and Jeff have shown a wetland. There's also steep slopes back in portions of this. There's a lot of resources going on, not covering all of the purple, but a chunk of it.
Okay.
Given the characteristics of this, I would, can we move straight to a straw poll that we don't remove that? Given that there's wetlands, steep slopes, and...
Okay, so you're asking to add back in the original habitat?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I have a question. Yeah, this is within, this is within city center? Is that why we... That's why we removed this, because we said that anything within city center, we would. Paul, so Paul, what is your opinion on the fact that we we made that decision to steer clear of city center, and now we're seeing that impact?
Well, I guess that the questions for you to consider are, it is in the official map to plan to have a roadway parallel to Williston Road on the north side of the buildings that are there. That becomes more viable the more that there's land that can be built to support private sector paying for a roadway. As I said before, a good chunk of this land is pretty steep. And if you have steep slope regulations and wetlands and that kind of thing, most of this won't be able to be built upon, but there may be sections, especially sort of at the bottom right, and maybe immediately behind the windjammer, which is that sort of U-shaped building. So I guess, you know, this is a tricky area, because there's a lot of different city policies that are coming together.
And with the number of resources that are there, the slopes, the wetlands, the majority of it will be protected through 10 and 12?
I guess, you know, if you're asking for my professional opinion on this one, I would say that there are a number of other resources that will protect the majority of the purple here. And so if there is land that is otherwise developable and is not a steep slope or a wetland, maybe that's somewhere where you want the priority to be, to allow for development. But this is your choice.
And can I ask Arrowood of the, I mean, we have a huge wetland, right, at the lower portion, which, so to me, the two, considering where the core is, if the two, I'm going to call them fingers, although they're very large, the two westernmost big fingers there, those seem quite far from the core, beyond perhaps the meters you normally are looking for. If we were to remove those two up to the wetland, but I guess I'm not even sure why we would do that. But if we did, would the core be intact and protected?
I think you're generally right. It appears that the core is currently mapped. If you kind of cut off those two fingers, it would remain, that core designated area would remain much the same if it was remapped.
Michael?
Yes, Paul mentioned that there's, on the official map, there's a road behind the hotels there. Maybe a solution for this is to protect or leave everything that's north of that proposed road. Add back everything that's north of that proposed road. And just leave, not quite sure how they're going to build the road across the wetland, but nevertheless, that might be a way to move on and...
Yeah, or Paul, I guess I have a question. Didn't we say that if it was on the official map, it could encroach? Or do we, or could we?
You did. I think my point was principally, you know, looking in this area here that I'm highlighting, whoops, sorry, that I just highlighted. There especially, and maybe a little bit here. The question is really not really about the roadway itself. It's about the economics that will lead the private sector to pay for a roadway back there. What incentives will exist for additional infill development in this area to support the construction of a roadway?
But Paul, the lower one that you've circled, that there's a huge wetland right there with the buffer, which would prevent much from happening in that lower circle.
Right, so that's my question. If it turns out that the wetland is somewhat, is smaller than that, would the wetland itself be sufficient to, if that protected, that's sufficient in the area?
So Paul, can you mark where the road is, if it's on the official map? Can you draw it in?
Yes, the current official map, I'm going to show you the official map and then the last study of it. The current official map does something like this.
Yep.
And then you commissioned a study a couple of years ago to revise that. I'm sorry, it goes in front of the hotel there. You commissioned a study to see about opportunities to modify it. And the modified proposal was to put it right up along the edge of J.C. Park and sort of go more or less like this.
Yeah, we did that because we wanted to make residential development viable there.
Right, and to potentially create a more formal edge to the park and to make it more, right, to make this area more viable for a neighborhood rather than being split.
So maybe the road doesn't impact, maybe the road doesn't impact my thinking, then I would say we should add this back, given the nature of the resources that are in this this habitat, this section of the Habitat Book 21.
Ted, did you have something?
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree that this is the area where we're hopefully having more density. It seems like you could go north a bit without ruining some of the habitat. I've been back to part of that area, and I wouldn't call, I mean, it just seems like junk land. It doesn't seem like it's highly viable for wildlife farther north, yes. So I guess I would say part, maybe not all the purple, but part of that area, I think, should be considered developable. If anyone else has been, I'm sorry.
I would propose another scenario where we accept Arrowood removing a portion that they feel does not harm the core and know that we'll have the wetland protection with that. So if Arrowood would be willing to give us a a line that shows where the core is protected and show us what could be removed there safely, that would be very helpful.
Maybe, I mean, what Paul did for the last one worked pretty well for us, maybe to draw an interim line there.
Yeah, I mean, I just took some measurements, and basically, where the two little, where the two roads sort of jut into the purple area, if you just draw a straight line across those, that's going to maintain your, right, that's going to maintain your 100-meter core habitat as currently mapped.
Okay, I guess, just to be clear, on the right side, would it connect the way Paul did? Or over to where the purple-brown boundary is? Like, yeah, something like...
Right, so if you're only, if you're only working with the core as map, then yeah, you could cut that extension off too. I think, I mean, I do think that well and pretty clearly extends up into that area, as we've drawn it there. And there's some steep slopes, so maybe it's enough that that's going to be doing the additional protection anyways.
Okay, there are a lot of lines there, which is which?
If you get a clean line, that we can...
A clean line. To draw it, if you'd like to draw it. You should have a tool that you can draw now.
Okay, maybe that's right here. So something, is that working?
Uh huh, it is.
So I'd say that, for starters, the question of whether you are, this, I think, is a is a different question because of the wetland and the slopes that are all in this southern arm. So what I'm trying to say is, you could take that off without it impacting the core. But there's certainly other values that it has for wildlife habitat.
So...
Bernie, do you want to go ahead?
Well, I was just going to kind of emphasize that, you know, I think when we add our 100-foot wetland buffer and our steep slopes, that that's going to take up the majority of that purple. And so the line that Arrowood is proposing, having everything of the north of that staying in the purple, I don't, definitely don't see any harm in that. And I, but I do think a lot of it is going to be taken up by other resources. So I would support removing, continuing to leave off of our map, everything south of the line that Arrowood drew in terms of the purple. And then have the dotted line that he shows there be the other boundary of the purple, because I think that the wetland and the wetland buffer and the steep slopes are going to cover most of that little lower right-hand portion of purple, so.
So add back what's north of those solid and dotted lines?
Yes.
Okay, I think we just, we have a comment. Sandy was asking about not, why we wouldn't have it in the city center. And, you know, Sandy, this was just part of the discussion of competing policies. We had made some decisions here about wanting development in city center, so that was the original thought. And then Jeff, Nick, did you, Joycey, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I know nothing about this area, the years of what I do for a living. I've met with a lot of these property owners over the time, and I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody. But just my comment was both here and for the Hill Farm especially. But, you know, you're drawing lines on a map. Somebody in the future, five, 10 years from now, could come up with some idea that really makes a lot of sense and you love it, but it crosses the line by 50 feet. And you've got this line on the map, now you've created a problem for yourself. You know, put a line on the map, that's fine, but give yourself some flexibility moving forward with, you know, 50, 100, 200 feet, that the applicant can then make a, you know, proposal, and then that'll allow you the flexibility just to basically move the line within reason to accommodate whatever project is being brought forth. And you may like it very much, and you want to make that change, but if you've got a hard pass time with the map, create problems for you in the future. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Bernie, Monica, you want something else? We're going to straw poll on what Bernie said.
Yeah, just really quickly, that to clarify, the line that we have just temporarily drawn here is actually going to be redrawn to be the buffer distance from the mapped core. Right?
No, I think you asked Aaron to draw where he thought it should be, so.
Right, so everything north of that line will remain habitat block. Everything south of that line will remain purple.
But Aaron, that looks to be, that line looks to provide the buffer that we have defined as being important.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all in favor of that proposal? So I see five hands up. So that would be in support of adding the purple north of both lines back into the habitat block. Very good. And we have one more. Potashboro, Lake Shore, Habitat Block 9. I know we did talk a little bit about some of this connectivity in the first place. And so I think the, what we're seeing is it's low, low impact, our removing that finger.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of, it was, this is a complicated spot. And I tried to sort of track through reviewing your minutes and one of your video meetings, exactly what's going on in this area. And it sounded like there's some, there's a... And it sounded like there's some, there's a park designation of some sort in there and, and some other things. I think the bottom line is that the removal of that little south dropping finger doesn't have a significant impact on the habitat block itself or on the core. The little bit of core that is a component of that block. But that there are some connectivity questions, especially in this more heavily developed landscape between Route 7 and the lake. And that, that forested area helps with that. So if it, if that area becomes developed, it, it's a, it's a impediment to that connectivity.
Paul, can you remind us why we look, moving this one?
What, say the question again, Monica?
Can you refresh our memory as to why we looked at removing this one?
In terms of the small purple area, my recollection of the conversation was that there are a number of other resources that you prioritized on this property, including 500 year floodplain, wetlands and other things. As well as Aaron noted, that the official map calls for a portion of it to be a city park. And so the question was sort of, what's the balance of this property overall? What's the, what's the sort of totality of the land and his planning objectives?
And I think part of it also was where he has his yellow, you know, looking at the resource mapping, where he has the, the north-south arrows. There's wetlands and stream buffers that are making that connection. And then if we're asking for Lake Shore, like then there would also be connection along the Lake Shore with our lake edge protections as well.
So. So I didn't, I honestly didn't understand the rationale for, when Paul gave for why we, why did we suggest removing that? Could you go over that again?
So the, the plant commission back in the fall looked at the totality of the 100 acres of the property. Looked to see that a portion of it is wetlands, a portion of it has the habitat block on it, a portion of it, as Jessica noted, has the state's, street, uh, lakefront buffer, a portion of the properties on the official map. And so, and the commission was looking at, so then what, what is, what has remained as a developable portion of the property? What should be retained to be able to be built, given that it's private land? And I think that's where the commission had landed on this piece of it.
Bernie?
I was just going to say to move things along, just to, I'll make the recommendation that we, we leave the purple part off as we had originally proposed. And, you know, we can take a straw poll on it and see how it shakes out. At this point, I'd be happy either way.
Can I just read something from, we, we said this area may require further examination, both of habitat function and planned roadways, if I'm looking at the right thing. Staff recommends the commission either remove the forested habitat block for the moment and return to the subject or include it, include it and return. So I don't know what we did.
Um, okay, so I guess Bernie suggested the straw, well, I guess you suggested just leaving it as is.
I suggested leaving it as we originally recommended with the purple not part of the habitat block. And the suggestion was mainly to take a straw poll and move it along and, you know.
Or we could do the straw poll the other way, which is who wants to put it back?
Either, either way, the vote's going to come out.
So who's interested in putting it back in?
I am.
And I know Paul Ingalls would be too. He seems to have dropped off, so, I mean, I can vote to put it back in. So we'll put it back in. So that, that finger will go back in to create that connectivity with the arrows. Okay, so I think we have made it through all of those things. And I very much appreciate Aaron and Jeff's participation. And we have one more item on the agenda with their input. Well, did you want to lead us into this next piece?
Sure, just a moment, sure. So a couple of meetings ago, following the public hearing, you had each identified some subject areas that you wanted to get some, to have some further dialogue on, to look at some options for. One of those was the subject of grasslands. And the request that you'd had was to understand grasslands a little bit more. And so what we thought we would do, given that you already had them here, was rather than hearing it from me through them, was to hear directly from them, just understanding what is a grassland in the Vermont landscape? And then from there, you can go into the policy discussion of, of options, which would be the next item.
So were we going to hear from Aaron? Is that what I just heard?
Okay, so, yeah, so Paul and I had this discussion a couple of weeks ago briefly about the concept of grasslands and what that means and what sort of regulatory protection might be. And so to kind of put it in concept, you know, grasslands are, is this habitat type that, that we have on our landscape. It's, it's, could be considered sort of a non-native habitat in many ways. It's, it's not something that was here pre-development, pre-settlement. And in this almost entirely forested landscape. And in this region, it would have existed as sort of ephemeral beaver meadows more than anything. And in a few select locations, perhaps some successional areas due to, due to prevalence of forest fire. But the grasslands that we have on our landscape now that have come to be, you know, if you'd seen as important habitat features for a select suite of species, in particular birds, but also, you know, a whole number of, some of the pollinator insects and, and then as sort of broader browse and forage habitat for a whole range of other wildlife, is by definition unmanaged and maintained habitat type. Left, left to its own devices, it wouldn't exist, right? It would revert to forest. And so that's the challenge when we talk about grassland, protection of grassland habitats is that if, if you, if you walk away from it, it's, it very quickly no, no longer serves the function that we value it for as, in that managed condition. So the species like the bobolink and the eastern metal lark. And, you know, I think less, certainly less so in South Burlington, but some of the larger grassland species that are much more uncommon, such as the upland sandpiper. You know, they, they just won't utilize it as soon as it becomes a shrubby landscape and certainly not when it grows into forest. So if the intention is to, is to protect those grassland landscapes you know, in, in the broader matrix of other habitats and, and development in the town, I'm not sure that, sort of taking a, you know, a development prohibition approach on it is going to be the most effective. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a conversation statewide of what is the most effective? And how do we best deal with it? And, you know, one of the things that's, that's proven to be fairly effective over the course of the last couple of years is, is actually these programs that pay farmers to cut only at specific times. Because that's the other problem we have with, with grasslands now is that as agricultural practices have become more intensive, the species that are using those habitats are being very negatively affected by the, effectively nest destruction and from, from farming machinery. So these programs that, that pay farmers to do their hang before the nesting season really kicks off in, in June and then delay their next cut until sometime in late July have shown to be probably the most effective tools we have to protect these landscapes. Because they keep them in agriculture, but they align that agriculture with the most biologically productive practices, I guess.
Aaron, they, they wouldn't necessarily have to be agricultural as long as there were the two, the two mows per, you know, one prior to breeding and one subsequent to breeding to maintain these areas as grasslands.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And in fact, in fact, you don't need to mow them twice a year. I mean, one of the, probably the most effective management regime would be to mow probably every other year. And then you'd maintain this mix of grass and broadly forbs in a fairly, you know, managed condition. But, yeah, so, right, that would be the best, probably.
Bernie?
Bernie, yes, thank.
Well, I was just going to say that it sounds like that there would need to be some kind of management plan for the land in order for it to be effective. So whoever the landowner is, you know, that, you know, would be, I guess, you know, we can't mandate that a landowner manage a piece of land. But certainly if it was, you know, city-owned, there could be a management plan. But otherwise, otherwise there would be no management plan, right? It would just be whatever the owner wanted to do with it, right?
Yeah, I think Bernie, the owner would, would want to retain it as grassland. And we have some examples of that right now. But it does require that every other year mowing. One of the things I noticed that we are not doing is that the, on the Underwood property, we have not done that. It was, it was a grassland and the, the sort of southwestern corner is now becoming something else because we, we, the city, haven't maintained it. But I think from an environmental point of view and, and, you know, wildlife and pollination and small mammals and hunting areas for raptors and, and carbon heat sinks, grasslands are pretty damn important. And in fact, I think Arrowood.
Wasn't Bernie's question directed at Aaron? I'm sorry, I'm not, sorry, Michael.
I don't know.
We're allowed, are we even, are we even able to require management plans in LDRs? Is that what your question was, Bernie?
No, it was just a broader clarification, I'm sorry. The, I just, all I was trying to point out is that, is that, you know, if you have a grassland, something has to be done with it in order for it to be effective. And, and that was confirmed, so I'm all.
Yep.
And then I think, Michael, your, it doesn't mean they're not important just because you have to manage for them. That was maybe a.
Right. And, and Arrowood had in a prior report recommended that these, I believe, the grasslands or the open areas on the, on the west side of, yeah, on the west side of Dorset Street should be kept, like, you know, retained that, the way they are. And that mostly grass, a lot of grassland. And there are just, just a few parcels south of the, of the golf courses, you know, well over 100 acres of grassland there. It was hay in the past.
Bernie, Bernie, then Monica?
I was just going to suggest that, you know, it's really great that we have Arrowood on here, that we kind of limit our questions to specific focus questions to Arrowood to tune in and clarify this grassland and agricultural land discussion and not tangent off into policy.
Monica, and then Paul Ingalls?
So my question for Arrowood, and I guess for everybody, is, you know, on map eight of the comp plan, there are two areas that had been identified as grasslands and shrublands that were listed as secondary conservation areas. And I think that one of the reasons this conversation has come up is because our new Article 12 map does not necessarily include all of that. Some of that is part of a buffer zone for some of our habitat blocks. But there are some areas where some portions of this map eight are technically no longer protected. And so I would ask, I'm curious about Arrowood's perspective of those areas. Because I think the question is, are we losing protection versus what's on map eight? The, the other question is, are there other areas where we should add protections? But I guess I'd first like to know, of the areas that we are no longer highlighting as protected versus map eight, are those significant? Is that a significant loss of protection?
Yeah, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with map eight or the changes you're talking about off the top of my head. So I, it's something I'd have to go back and review to know kind of more specifically what we're talking about. I, I mean, in general, you know, the habitat block started with this idea of being forest blocks. And as we looked at the South Burlington landscape, it seemed critical to include that those shrubby areas adjacent to them. But the grasslands are fundamentally different type of habitat. And yes, they all work together in certain respects. And, and that's absolutely true. But, but in trying to kind of isolate this forest habitat block concept, they, it's, it's a fundamentally different thing. We did talk in the forest block ranking about this adjacent connecting habitat. And certainly grasslands played a role in that. I'm sorry, not connecting, supporting habitat. It's this kind of this broader landscape, broader undeveloped landscape, kind of interstitially and out beyond the habitat blocks themselves. You know, more specifically to grasslands themselves, if, you know, if the objective is to protect grasslands, you know, I think the, for the, for the unique species and characteristics they provide, I think it's, it's a different kind of conversation than forest blocks and general supporting habitat. Because that general supporting habitat can be in any stage of succession. But grasslands require a very specific management regime with, with very specific human interventions, right?
Can I ask a follow-up to that then? If it's not, it sounds to me like what you're saying is the, the more impactful thing that we as a city can do is not so much highlight areas on a map, but rather say, hey, anyone with X amount of acreage on their parcel, please consider this land management. You know, you don't need to mow five acres. Can you consider this other land management strategy? And I don't know what mechanism we, we have to do that other than to educate people about it. But that sounds more like a, a land management prob, a, a land management policy that would be citywide. Because will the, the animals that you've discussed benefit from grasslands? Will they opt? Will they operate in kind of a patchwork or do they need to have one area that's large enough to, like a core to even work with it? Or will they find even small patches wherever, as long as they have the protection within the grass?
Yeah, good question. So when we're talking about grassland, we're typically talking about the species that that require of, an open herbaceous vegetated area of a certain size. And generally, that's the general accepted kind of minimum size is about 20 acres. You know, some of these bird species and others will nest in smaller areas. But sort of the, the sort of the, the critical mass, if you will, is, is at 20 acres and up.
Would that 20 acres only be the specific type of habitat? Or would it include some of the first shrubby areas nearby?
It can include some of the shrubby areas. Once you get into tree areas, it's that limits the effectiveness of the habitat for supporting those species.
Okay. Michael.
There's a bunch of other pieces and parts, as you know, in kind of habitat designations and, you know, bobolinks, for example, are pretty sensitive to, to widths of habitat. So if you have, you know, narrow fingers of grassland, it's much less appealing to them than broad open areas. They tend to prefer open areas in a matrix of other open areas. So you know, a single little patch of field in the middle of a forest, that's less, less appealing habitat to the species like bobolinks than than a field separated from other fields by hedgerows and small patches of woods.
Okay, Michael and Paul Ingalls?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, did you want to respond to that?
Aaron, I guess the objective wasn't so much the protection of grasslands per se, but protection of the environment and what role protection of grasslands would play in, in improving our environmental protection and the functions of the areas that, that can be, can contribute to environmental protection and improvement. So not protect grasslands per se, but protect them in in view of protecting the environment in a more general sense. You know, clean water, clean air, pollination, small mammals, they all, they all count. But that's, that's, that was my question. We, my interest in protecting grasslands is more general and related to environmental protection in a general sense, and they seem to play an important role. And that's my question for you.
Yes, I don't disagree. Certainly habitat diversity, species diversity on our landscape is an important important piece of the whole mix. So having, having that variability only makes sort of the entire environmental integrity stronger.
May I? I'm going to let Aaron continue with this discussion. I got stuck on a late night plane last night that couldn't come to Vermont because of the thunderstorm. So I slept very little last night. Aaron's doing a wonderful job. And I think I have to go and put my head down.
Well, thank you, Jeff, for bringing this. I know this has gotten late.
Night.
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 Um, Paul, Connor, and then Paul Ingalls?
Sure. So, you know, I think picking up on what Michael and then Aaron were just saying, the, you asked us also to be looking at, you know, what, what is mapped as grasslands? And I think that in and of itself is a very challenging exercise because it, what is mapped as grasslands in 2021 might be something very different in 2019 or 2023. And so from a regulatory perspective, that, that becomes challenging to look at it and say, this is a grassland to be managed as that resource. And therefore, that was part of what led us to have our recommendations of circling these sort of red areas in the city and saying, regardless of whether it happens to be mapped today as a grassland, it is a undeveloped area. These are largely undeveloped areas that are presently designated for development because they are not listed as a resource. If the commission's perspective is that these areas, regardless of whether they happen to be an active farmland or a, a grassland or another designation, that there's a different priority. That was sort of the, the landscape approach that we were recommending that you think about in terms of your overall priorities. And then if you chose the tools to implement that could be either to allow those areas to be neighborhoods or to have something like a conservation PUD. Or if you'd like to have the highest priority be on conservation, that's essentially what the Natural Resource Protection District was set up originally to do, which was to obliterate a variety of, of resources of importance to the city and say, this is a natural resource area without having to pick out the precise exact function of each area as grassland or forest land or blank, blank, blank. So.
Paul Ingalls and then Bernie?
Well, I just think there's a different dimension to grasslands as far as open space is concerned, and that is views. I mean, we have the views of the Adirondacks and the Green Mountains. And, you know, that's, that, that open space that you see on Dorset Street or Spear Street that allows you to see those mountains in the distance is really important, I think, essential to South Burlington too. So I think, you know, in addition to the animal habitat, I think that, you know, quality of life for the city, for residents of the city is important to have open space like that, too.
Yeah. Bernie?
So just two comments. Number one is just, I kind of again, ask if we can keep questions specific to Aaron so that we can get him off the hook here. And then the second thing is, is Paul provided a really good introduction to our homework, which is the policy part of the discussion, which quite frankly, I'm not sure we're going to get to tonight. But again, I kind of just recommend that we not discuss the policy part of it because that's the homework. And I'm sure that we're going to have a lively discussion on that when the time comes. So I guess, you know, and for the sake of time, I would just recommend that we have Aaron on the, on the line here. Are there any other specific questions related to anything that he's talked about that we can wrap up and then decide if we want to move on?
Monica?
I guess so on that, the, I get, what I need to understand is if, if, is back to grasslands. If what we're saying is grasslands need to be maintained, but the LDRs cannot require that, right? Can I just get clarification on that?
Monica, let me take a shot at that question. And Aaron, jump in from any experience that you've got. The land development regulations first and foremost are enacted by land development. So a condition placed on a property is, can be, you know, part of a, a, a development. And so for example, you have the industrial open space district that requires 50% open space, 50% development. You could provide incentives in that for the manner in which the 50% is open, this open space is managed. Where this becomes tricky is there are several activities and actions that are exempt from local regulation altogether. Farming is exempt under the law. And so Aaron described some of these incentives programs of paying farmers, but we don't have the right as a city to say you cannot farm it. We also, I, I, I posed the question to our city attorney, and I think it's a interesting and challenging question to ask of, could the city require some form of management absent there being development of property? I think that's a head scratcher to be, to be honest. So that's, those are my couple of thoughts on it. I don't know, Aaron, if you've had experience in this specific field.
Not so much with municipal regulatory arena, but on a statewide level. I mean, we're seeing this a lot with solar development right now. And that one way that the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources is choosing to require mitigation when a solar farm might impact a significant grassland habitat is requiring the developer to pay into the, the program that's most common right now is the oh, the name is eluding me, but the bobolink management program or something like that is managed by Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Vermont Audubon jointly, I think. And so basically requiring them to pay into that program, which in turn goes out, finds farmers in the broader region willing to adhere to specific management practices and thus maintain those habitat types. But that may not be, that may not happen locally or, you know, directly adjacent to a given project or something like that. But that's the most common sort of mitigation strategy that we're seeing these days.
So is it fair to say that it is irresponsible to have regulations on grasslands? Because we can't, we have no, there's nothing we can do. If we, if we put a circle on a map and say this is grasslands and their airport needs to be protected, we can't make them keep it as grasslands and then it can become shrubby and then then what? I mean, so, so either I guess it doesn't, to me, what this is clarifying for me is that you can't circle an area on a map and make it grasslands like we have on map eight. Because you can't, you can't require that it stay that way and the bobolink will not stay. If grass is not maintained, and we probably don't even, I don't even know if we have any that are 20 acres. It's maybe over at the industrial.
Right. Back to what I was saying a moment ago, if the commission were to choose, you could identify areas as being important, natural resource areas, regulated as such. But it would be difficult to look at it like a wetland is looked at or look at it like a steep slope is looked at or flood plain because the resource itself, as Aaron was describing, is a managed state. So it would be from a landscape perspective and less from a individual point in time resource.
Yeah, I mean, this is totally shooting from the hip. And the, but the only thing that occurs to me kind of off the top of my head is some scenario where a proposal is required to not develop a certain amount of existing grassland habitat and also to pay into a fund that the city uses to manage it or something like that. So that you have some assurance that it's managed in a particular manner in the long term. And I, you know, very quickly getting out of my wheelhouse. So I don't know all of the, the ins and outs of logistics that would be involved there.
I mean, the reality is if the city properly maintained Underwood, we would have the largest grasslands in the city right there, but we're not maintaining it. So, right? I mean, we need to be mowing that every two years. And we're not doing that, to Michael's point, and other things are growing this, or we're destroying the largest city-owned grassland. And if anything should be discussed, it's how do we protect that grassland? Because it is the largest acreage. And, and that doesn't fit into this. But if we want to protect grassland, that's the one to protect. And it's within the city's realm to do it. And otherwise, I go back to looking at our Articles 10 and 12. And unless there's a portion of a habitat block that could be extended to cover some of this natural habitat that we're talking about, I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing a change to Articles 10 and 12 based on what I'm hearing now. That's my two cents.
Um, Michael?
Yeah, there, there are other, I mean, as Paul mentioned, what was grassland in 2019 may not be grassland in 2021. Not grassland in 2021 may well be grassland in 2023. And we've seen this recently. So I guess that my question is, would we be able to incentivize the, the, in, in grasslands that are private hands, privately owned? Would we be able to incentivize those landowners in some way to maintain their grassland? I mean, there, there, I know of one who is doing it. It's only 33 acres, but he's, he's basically, he's, he's done it already. He's converted what was hay, a hayfield into a natural grassland with, with local grass species. And so the question is, can we incentivize landowners who own grasslands to keep them that way for, for, for environmental protection purposes? Something we need to look, look at.
That's a really good point. And I think there's so many, so many good things that we can leave IZ knowing that we can make recommendations on that way in terms of incentives. There's so many things people can do. My question is, we're trying to finalize Articles 10 and 12. Do incentive, do incentives for the community fit into the conversation right now? Or can we say that this looks like something that we should discuss at a later date in terms of what general incentives can all private landowners do to be more environmentally cautious? But does that, but it does not fit into Articles 10 and 12, but we can't regulate it. And if that sounds right, I propose that we move on.
We should probably move on anyway.
Well, so what's important right now is that we have kept Aaron on till 9:48. And if we have any more questions for him, we should do it now while he's still on. So we can then let him go. So I just want to make sure that we are, we are done with our questions for Aaron. I'm seeing a lot of smiles and thumbs up. So Aaron, thank you so much. I know this was a long meeting with a lot of hard questions, so.
All good stuff.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we are all set with our questions for, for you tonight.
Great. Thanks a lot. Good luck to you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Aaron.
Okay. It is very late, so I'm not exactly sure where to go now.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, one thing that I'd like to do before we adjourn, somebody is talking, an audience member in the background. One thing I would like to do before we adjourn is to see if we can possibly add an additional meeting before our next one, which is pretty far away. And I have not talked about this with Paul at all. But it feels like there's a lot of other things on this agenda and coming up on the schedule, which Monica waving. So I guess I'm wondering sometime in the next two weeks, we might be able to find an additional meeting date just because there are five Tuesdays in this month. And it's pretty long till our next meeting. Bernie?
What about next week?
Bernie?
So I was just going to suggest two things. Number one is I think it would be good to spend a very short amount of time just going through the schedule that Paul prepared. And number two, I agree, maybe in terms of another meeting. And maybe the best way to do that would be just to send out a doodle poll. So, so maybe that's what I would recommend, a few minutes on the schedule and agree that we're going to do a doodle poll and then call it an evening, if that's okay.
Paul?
I think that's a good idea. One piece of update that you don't know is that yesterday, Jesse and I had a conversation with the chair and the vice chair of the council and talked a little bit about these red circle areas. They expressed interest in the council having a discussion about this same thing to make sure that everybody's getting on the same page towards the finish line. And they were very interested in the commission giving you where you're at to help inform them with their dialogue as well on this. And so I would agree. their dialogue as well on this. And so I would agree that a meeting next week would be a good idea to help move this along and to have any shot at meeting the very ambitious schedule that Monica just held up.
Um, do we want to just vote on a meeting next Tuesday?
I can't do Tuesday. But, but if I'm the only one, I can't be there Tuesday.
I'll send out a doodle poll in the morning, if that's okay to everybody.
Yes. I mean, can anyone do Wednesday? Should we just, is Wednesday? No?
I can do.
Doodle poll.
I could do Tuesday or Wednesday.
We're gonna do adjourn as Paul Ingalls suggested. Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Just looking for a second, that's all.
God, um, um, thank you for that, Jessica. Jessica, I'm starving.
Yes, thank you.
Good doggy.
Well, we'll make sure to talk schedule very early in next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.